of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sure thing. Commissioner Godiosa?
Here.
Commissioner Baako?
Here.
Commissioner Whitaker?
Here.
Commissioner Rakowski?
Here.
Commissioner Neary?
Here.
Lisa Katania? Mr. Van Wick? And myself, George Neil is present.
Thank you. This project will have a presentation of the Limwood Heights Neighborhood Revitalization Plan.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. For everybody's reference, my name is Brian Seidel. I'm the Township Planner. Here tonight, I'm just going to provide a brief overview of the Limwood Heights Plan. This was a Neighborhood Revitalization Plan. It was started with a funding or grant from Delaware County Redevelopment Authority. The Redevelopment Authority retained Delta Development Group, which prepared a report for the community, which consisted of a lot of surveys, demographic data, information, property characteristics, generalized information. Basically resulted in about a hundred-page document. We reviewed that document, myself, the engineering, to determine what we liked and what we didn't like about that report. There were a couple of things that came out of it. One, it was a lengthy report. It was a little bit cumbersome, a little bit bulky. We wanted to be simplified, that everybody could understand that, so the community could understand it. We wanted to reflect the community. And as a result of that, we boiled that down to the report that's in front of you tonight. Basically boiled down from about a hundred-page report down to a ten-page report. With that, we simplified overall the plan, the report. And what's in front of you on the border on the wall here this evening is a series of graphics and exhibits that were included within that report. And some of this was presented and discussed with Delaware County Redevelopment Authority and the Commissioners to show them what the Township has been working on and the initiatives, and how this does fit in with the county's housing plan, which they adopted last year. We're calling this report the Executive Summary, so to speak. It identifies the vision for the community, which we've broken down into four categories, which are to provide stabilized and beautiful neighborhoods, mixed-use zoning corridors in Chi Chester Avenue and Market Street, multimodal transportation enhancements, and provide community involvement and public improvement. That we, basically that's the vision, that's the goals in the community. And then from within those categories, we further define this into tasks, action items, and other capital improvements and partnerships that could be accomplished. This is going to speak to...
As Brian noted, hi, I'm Lisa Katania. I'm the Township Engineer. As Brian alluded, we were asked to simplify the report into action items. We have the, we have a listing of goals and action items. Very short, one pager, that we'd be able to pick off a specific goal. None of the goals that are shown on the spreadsheet are actually prioritized. So each one has its own value. Each one are interacting with each other. However, in order for us to simplify and come up with actionable plan, we decided to simplify the certain goals. Our goal is to improve the neighborhood, stabilization and beauty. And right now, we are working with the community to add and help improve the infill and redevelopment of that particular area. And that's ongoing, that will be ongoing. We started with the update to the SALDO regulations. So subdivision and land development are for anyone that is coming in that wants to do a development within the community. And there are certain rules and standards that are necessary. So Brian and I, along with members of the Planning Commission and the staff here at Upper Chi, are working on that SALDO as we speak. Whether George got his... We're working on that. We have incentivized the commercial district. We're looking constantly for local incentive funding for the local businesses. As you can probably see, we've started on this Chi Chester Avenue Streetscape. We're about eighty-five percent complete on the work on the Streetscape. That started from the Lower Chi Chester Township corner to approximately just past I-95, we'll be going up to Beeson Avenue with that project. We're going to continue that with the same multimodal funding that we received to Scott Avenue at a minimum. So we're moving forward into what would be called the Town Center. Meeting House in Chi Chester Avenue area. And that, that project is currently under a planning stage. We're working on the Boothwin Town Center. We are looking at, throughout the neighborhood, developing a plan to install sidewalks, ADA curb ramps, and street lighting, identify opportunities for stormwater management. We've had quite a few mandates from the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection. And there are grant opportunities out there, so we're looking to get some of those, that grant funding for the area. Ongoing, we will be taking a look at parking and other Streetscape options. We do have a, a concept plan for Johnson Avenue. And we recently, I guess two years ago, received funding for, from PICO, from ExOne, for a green region grant. And you'll see new tables, they're actually play tables, that are also picnic tables that we placed in the park. That was through a grant program. And we're going to continue to do portions of a, of the concept plan that we have for, for Johnson Avenue Park. Going to continue investments with the passive recreation improvements. We need to be inclusive, so we're not just looking at activities for our youth. We're looking for activities for every age, every genre, anyone that would like to be outdoors or indoors. We're looking for, for various opportunities for what we would consider recreation, depending on what that recreation is. We're also encouraging partnerships with, with organizations. Hart and Soul, Bartelli and her gang are doing a great job in investing time with the community. See what they're going to do, and they're going to keep moving that forward. And we're going to empower and encourage residents to utilize Johnson Parks for the community investment. We're, we're going to continue, that's part of our goals. There is a copy of this summary available, if anyone would like to see it. I believe it's online at this point.
If the Board so chooses to adopt tonight, it'll be placed on our website tomorrow.
That's all I have, and Brian and I will answer any questions.
I'd like to give a, just a real quick summary too. So this is one of our neighborhood plans, one of the projects that we've been working on. One of the things that municipalities need to do is called comprehensive planning. Comprehensive planning usually ends up being about a four-hundred-page book that says, how should everything in the township uses, you know, what should land uses be, protecting historical assets, protecting natural assets, parks, all these things. And they're typically really hard to get through and really hard to be boiled down as to what are the projects that should be done in areas for your best bang for your buck. So we kind of took a bottom-up approach to creating a comprehensive plan. We've divided the Township based off of information we received from longtime residents and the Historical Society on what we're calling like twelve different areas. This area, Limwood Heights, is, I believe, early eighteen hundreds. This was, this development started getting built out. You know, there's Twin Oaks, I see some members of the Twin Oaks Village Community here today, Twin Oaks Farms, Ogden, Boothwin, Gardendale, Larkins Corner. So there's all these different historic neighborhoods that for years and years and years existed, or farm areas that existed. So we're treating each one of them as a specific area, and we're doing these plans for each one of these, so we can get really hyper-local. So you'll see signage that's just, you know, natural just to that area. If you look at some of the street signs, they already have the Township seal with a image that represents that community on it. But then we'll have things that match all the way throughout the Township. So we're looking at, you know, utilizing the same pedestrian-level streetlights wherever we do the improvements. We're looking at using the same type of patterns on the crosswalks wherever we go. So as you go through Upper Chi Chester Township, you'll be able to see it as Upper Chi Chester Township, but also know that you're in a very unique area, like the Boothwin Town Center, like Limwood Heights. And it gives, it builds character, it builds place-making, gets people really excited about where they live. And this is a really good project and a good thing for the community to do. And as far as grant funding goes, this is what they look for. So this is really going to help us be able to leverage county, state, and federal dollars to be able to accomplish, you know, and give back and really kind of put back into the community.
Any questions from the board?
Great.
Thank you very much for presenting. At this moment, I would like to move to a number eight on our agenda. I'm going to move that up, and then we'll go to the Senator comments after that. Ninety-three-year-old. We need a black proposal for a nomination card. That will be read by Commissioner Penner.
Do you have the mic? Do you have the mic?
Yes.
All right. Whereas the Township of Upper Chi Chester takes pride in its longtime citizens who bring joy, dedication, and involvement to their community. Whereas Mrs. Small has been an active member of the Twin Oaks Community for many years. And on July twentieth, twenty-twenty-one, she celebrated her ninety-third birthday. Whereas Mrs. Small is the oldest living member of the Twin Oaks Village and lives in the original schoolhouse, established and erected by the school directors of Chi Chester, of Upper Chi Chester, Chester Township, for the first and second grades. Whereas her husband, Norman Small, deceased, was an active and lifelong member of Upper Chi Chester. And his mother was a founding member of Mount Pleasant Baptist Church. Whereas there are many areas of service to the youth and community provided by Mrs. Small as Girl Scout leader, advocate for integrational schools, advocate for plumbing, sidewalks, and street lighting, member of the Twin Oaks Fire Company Ladies Auxiliary, member of Twin Oaks Village Civic Association, mentor to young women in the community. Whereas Mrs. Small is one of the oldest living members of the Mount Pleasant Baptist Church with seventy years of service with the Sunday School, Senior Choir, Missionary, Intercessors, Women's Ministry, and Daycare Center teacher. Whereas her favorite routine was daily morning walk through the community, followed by meditating on the Word of Prayer, including hobbies of daily Bible reading, walking, crocheting, and enjoy spending time with family and friends. Whereas her children, excuse me, whereas her children rise up and call her blessed. She has a great sense of humor and encouraging to all she comes in contact with. Now therefore be proclaimed, the Board of Commissioners of Upper Chi Chester Township does hereby wish Mrs. Corinne Janet Small a happy and healthy ninety-third birthday and wish her many more years of prosperity, proclaimed on this ninth day of September two thousand and twenty-one. And she got a plaque, ninety-three, and she stands straight. She uses a cane, but that's a good... No, you can't. She has anything to say. Aunt Corinne, did you want to say something? Okay. Yes, you are. Yes, you are.
I will move on to item...
Good evening. I'm Betsy Barnes, the Librarian at Upper Chi Chester Library from Newtown Square, Pennsylvania. And I want to thank the Township for allowing the library to have their big book sale. It's, it ends to, we're there tonight to eight o'clock. We're there all day tomorrow, eight to eight, and Saturday, eight to three. We have some great sales and fill a bag for twenty dollars and each day there'll be a discount. So please come. Tomorrow night, we are celebrating our twentieth year of service. We were established on September tenth, twenty-two, twenty-oh-one, the day before nine eleven. So we are celebrating it outside, right here on Fury Road. From five to eight P.M., there will be the Delco Cruisers will be on display in the parking lot. We're going to have two food trucks, ice cream truck, and hot dogs and burgers and fries, and ice cream, a birthday cake for our celebration, and music. And also the book sale to eight o'clock. So, you know, we hope you will come and help celebrate twenty years of service to your community. We also have some other programs going on, so I just wanted to let you know about that. Okay? Okay.
Thanks, Betsy.
And when it rains, the water runs across the top of the ground. It's tearing up the sidewalk. In the summertime, the water sits there under the street. There's things like Little Todd and Marcus Hook. And nobody, you know?
Hi there.
Down Broadway Avenue, sidewalk is falling. And once those trucks come through, they're heavy. They have a hole in the road. I just wanted to let you know that. I wasn't aware of that.
No. George is, George is aware of that. We've had conversations regarding that property. It changes hands. People think that they can, you know, buy it, develop it. Then once they realize it's filled with water, the water that from Bellevue Terrace all the way through to Washington Avenue is a problem. And we've discussed that.
Do you have any emails for him?
There are the plates on private property. It could be ours.
Yeah.
It's not a fight.
It's not a fight. So applying for that grant, what are the options? Because I'm aware of that grant, and it's not a lot of money available in there, so what would be the... So that's, that is considered stormwater? Is that considered stormwater? Or is that, is that considered a part of like the stormwater plan? Or could it fall under a category of stormwater slash infrastructure? Like what would it fall under so we could... Right.
It becomes a much more palatable project for grant funding when it's a larger-scale project that achieves something. Because it's, right now, it's two boxes on a, you know, twenty-four-foot wide roadway, right?
So part of you should...
Who diswayal? Whose, whose property is diswayal on?
So what was the project that you already designed? What was the cost estimate of that? Do you have a cost estimate of it? I'm sorry, you referenced a previous project. Oh, how much was that? Four hundred? That was four hundred? Okay.
My name is Fred Hamilton. I live at twenty-five ninety-nine Williams Street. It's been a while since I've been here, but I figured things might change over the years. But my son-in-law tried to build a house on Bellevue Terrace. And it seems like every time somebody comes into Twin Oaks that wants to build a private home, it's always a bunch of crap. But we sat around and we watched y'all come in and tear up our streets and treat us like second-class citizens year after year. Mike, you know, it just never seems to end. You know, no matter what we do, we have to always come over and beg for the same things everybody already gets. We don't want anything special. We just want to be treated like everybody else in this whole community. We fought y'all for fifteen years to stop y'all from building low-income housing. You want to bring a hundred broke people in Twin Oaks, but people that have money can afford a big private home, you give them aggravation. My son-in-law had plenty of money. Now he wants to build his house, he's got to put a street in, a cul-de-sac. For what? Every time we get grant money, they come in, Lisa, you come, we come home, my wife come home, we come, go to work, come back, our driveway ain't gone. You know what I mean? That's the way we get treated. So I mean, Mike, it's got to be a point where the money that y'all have gotten for the last twenty years, you come in, they get grant money, not you, not some of these members. You come in, you get, they get grant money, they show up, they do whatever they want to do, second-class work, treat us like animals and leave. You know, this has to stop. So I think the only thing we can do, and I'm telling everybody here, is go to the county council. They, for the last twenty-five years, they've given this township money for projects in Twin Oaks, and they've stolen it, basically. You know, so that has to stop. And we're going to find out who's accountable for all the years that y'all got grant money and did whatever they wanted to do with it, and pocketed most of the money. So I think we got to make a change on it. When somebody in Twin Oaks wants to come and build a house, treat them like you do in anybody else's neighborhood.
Every time we get grant money in, Fred, it's always allocated. We work closely with... I'm not, I'm not...
Yeah, no, I was just saying...
I'm not, I'm not putting that forward, because from y'all's opinion, everything's been good. For the last thirty years, they've achieved a lot of stuff that rightfully belongs to them. You're not accountable because of the grant money, and they take it in. They treat it as if you have a meeting to another. My mother got off at work, she's crying, I'm like, this is wrong. They came to the house, cut the tree down. The plan was to build a house. Like what are you talking about? They came, cut the tree down to start putting the street in, but I haven't known, felt the pain that they were going to do anything. Like this has been going on before we got here. The steam is not gonna stop. You can't keep pushing on the middle wall because you're gonna have to fight that. But what's this, but you know, I'm surprised with that crap. Treat the people who come up, we can't, no more, no less.
Thank you, Fred.
So, um, regarding Larry Jackson, that's the property on, um, Bellevue. So when he perched, when he decided that he wanted to, to buy that, he, um, he agreed to the road improvements, right? They, you know, most people agree to, to things. And then once they figure out what it all entails and to see the dollar amount, it's, um, it's kind of a, a, I guess a sticker shock. So we did attempt to make some adjustments. Ed and I went out to the property, met with Larry, um, made recommendations, um, as well as Barb. Talked with her about making some recommendations for changes that could be done with the plan. By that time, he was frustrated and didn't want to do it. So he applied, he asked the board for this piece of property off the repository list. There's a lot, lots of properties, um, on a repository list around, you know, through the county. They send each municipality a list. And then if it's something next door to you or something in your neighborhood, something you want to buy, you ask the, the board of commissioners if they're okay with it. The board, um, gave him the letter to say, yes, you can purchase it off the repository list, which is what he did. So he agreed to the road improvements. And then when it, you know, with between him and his engineer and the dollar amount, he figured he couldn't afford it. So we tried to make some adjustments to that, um, and was waiting for him. I talked to him, was waiting for him to reach back out to say, hey, we're going to make some improvements and, you know, try to make it affordable. He didn't reach back out. He was frustrated. So he kind of walked away.
Anybody in the city would have to do roads. I mean, the road does not belong to Larry Jackson. He did. So why should we, they had the money to do that. If they wanted to go into the street, they could have used that money to go and do it there. Why don't the people build the city off their property?
So that's a, that's a great question. That's been.
The money they could have did, it is, that's totally true.
Right. So, so. So let me answer that. We've been talking about that because we had the same issue on Douglas Avenue while developing the street, right? So, um, I'm going to defer to either George or Lisa to discuss why. You know, because my thing is why don't we develop? Why don't we go to the industry? It takes a lot. It's very costly. Um, so Georgia, Lisa. Okay.
It seems like the town could make the money to build the street all the way around the face to put low income housing. They have no problem coming up with money for that.
But that wasn't.
They have the money to put a whole road around.
So my understanding, and, and you know, we're aware of that project, that was, that was a developer. So when a developer comes in, they're building multiple units. So they're selling those houses for what? A hundred thousand dollars each? They have the money, they have the capital to develop the roads, put in stormwater drains, the whole project. So it is costly for it.
I know, the building is developed from Chinatown to the county council. So we all know that Chinatown is on 15 lots up there. But they getting all the money to build that low income housing. Why couldn't you come down and have brick money? You could have did Douglas Avenue. You could have did Bellevue Terrace. They could have did it all. You know, I mean, they even took the road, you know, they had no problem blocking off the road through Bellevue Terrace. General, probably to give them that road.
So Georgia or Lisa, do you want to respond? Please talk on the mic because I'm getting text messages from people that are watching and can't hear.
So Fred, you bring up a lot of items that, uh, I mean. But it's, so it's a lot of stuff that I've not witnessed here yet. So I, you know, I apologize if I, I'm dumb to the, to those happenings that may have happened here at a previous time. Um, so the way it works is that the, the obligation of the government is to adopt an official roadmap. And that official roadmap is an official roadmap that outlays streets or potential streets for a municipality. And as properties get built along areas of undeveloped roadways, the obligation to build the public improvement goes to the property that abuts that. And then they give deed of dedication to the township for the use of all individuals. So essentially it's saying, you would like to build, whether you want to build one house or a hundred houses. And you abut a roadway that already exists. And there's, you would, you would not be required to put the roadway in because the roadway already exists. If there's a planned road that doesn't exist in, as a road, as a, what we know as a road, as asphalt, you know, that the obligation to develop that goes to the abutting property owner. So i- in like situations like that, so if, um, the, so where Mr. Jackson was interested in building in, there's lots on the right-hand side, there's lots on the left-hand side, right? So if, uh, if Mr. Jackson had not put in his side of the roadway on the right-hand side, um, I, I candidly don't know how he would have been able to actually get out to the road unless some type of vacation of the roadway had happened, which would mean that we would be land locking the other property owner from being able to get out, like to, to build. So if they went to build.
You applied for a grant that they did for 12 or 14 years. Part of that grant agreement was that you were supposed to sit down with the people in that community and discuss what you were going to do, how you were going to do it, how much it was going to cost. So the people that would have it on, on that street would have an input on what you were going to do with that money. That wasn't the township's money, that was grant money. I mean, so the process is to go to the people in that community, to talk to them and get their feedback on what you're planning on doing, like who's going to have this.
So, so I'm not aware of a specific requirement by law to do that. So for community development block grant, the requirement is the requirement that we, we do every year, which is in December, we have a public hearing. And during that public hearing, the engineer, the township staff, we talk about potential projects. And we solicit input from anybody at the public meeting. That's an advertised public media, public hearing. It's put in the newspaper. Um, you know, I think that we've done, this group's done a, a better job of holding town halls when things have come up. Uh, remember, you know, we had that big town hall with CSX when CSX wanted to come in and develop. A lot of people came out to that. Uh, we have this heart and soul program to try to get out into the communities, get people active. Um, so, so I think, I mean, we take that another step. We did the street staple on Chichester Avenue. We reached out by letters to everybody invited them to a virtual meeting. We talked about the construction process before it. So, so as far as like a legal requirement to reach out, I don't think there anything exists there. But this board has been really good about trying to be like really outward and involve people in that process. So the, uh, I do urge, uh, Twin Oaks Village has shown up on the community development block grant eligibility list for the past couple of years. So has Limwood Heights, so has Booth-Wintown Center. So I would encourage residents from all of those wards to come out to that November hearing. So you can hear about potential projects that the township is thinking about doing. And then you can voice your concerns about those projects, ask questions, um, to find out more about that. It's okay, Mrs. Thorpe. We know you're a very popular lady.
The street, there was a street. That they never said, never a street here. Just began with the development. And it was in the first. That's a story. And, um, these streets would come up to the top of the hill. They never came down. They were all, um, stones and dirt. So after we moved, of course, if you want to go back. Anyway, just to say that there was a street here. Families living there. On that street. Some people had that house, probably from Booker Avenue all the way up to Douglas Avenue. That was already done. Even that was down to the cusp. Something wild would say. Those are our street.
Lisa respond. Mike, hold on Lisa. Can you, can you use the microphone, Lisa?
We're gonna let Lisa respond to your.
Can you get close to the microphone?
About legally dedicated street. So in order for it to be a legally dedicated street, the, um, the title, so whoever is building this street, or they will own it, uh, it has to be improved. So it has to have, it has to be, has not started, whatever. At that point, there's a deed of dedication. Talk to that a little bit better. Deed of dedication that's offered and then. That's, that's, so it's a different, different moving place of what we talk. And what is areas that have not been improved or not considered, not that in the streets. There is law in the state of Pennsylvania. Now George talked about the map. We have maps that show this is where street works. If they are not improved within 21 years, that property converts back to winning property vote. So we don't have a right to redevelop that area of poor street without getting that property from this particular property.
I was saying, two days. Never, they were supposed to pay. It did not prove because it. It was supposed to pay every street, every street.
If you're referring to the, I believe it was only set in 1978. Community Development, lot choice of redevelopment authority at the time had put a, a notification of a grant funding. Thousand dollars. I found those documents in our. In 1979, it was for construction of Broadway and 150 feet of Douglas. So I have that document. Um, it, it, I don't have anything further as far as there was supposed to be another $50,000. We have no record in our office of a project that will be. I don't know whether the township was actually getting that money. That was a five-year plan from what I. But it was redevelopment authority. Delaware County. As a matter of fact, the specifications for that project were actually not in Upper Chichester Parish's name. They were in redevelopment authority Delaware County's. So it was not Upper Chichester Township. Only redevelopment.
Oh, yeah, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna be involved in the next one, but.
Now I'm missing that one.
Yeah, but we're going back to 1978. And it was, as the engineer said, she, she gave the limits of what the work was at that particular time. So to go back, you know, from, you know, from this day to go back to 1978, I, this is, it's impossible to answer any questions. That kind of, kind of might happen back then. So I'll take one more question. Uh, go ahead.
My name's Al Wilson. I live at 4101 Cornwallis Drive in Boothland. Um, York Town Development. Been there since they poured concrete. They were sold as attached singles. There's a, uh, a setback. These, and that's five feet. So, you know, if you're going to build a deck, you can't, it's got to be five feet from the edge of your home. I believe this was an honest mistake that somebody, um, Charlie, I guess his name would be, told the neighbor that he could build it five inches to the property. So it is right up to my home. If this gentleman were to fire up his grill, he's going to melt my siding. And I could basically hand him a dish from my, my, my kitchen window, you know? And I, this started, uh, at 5919. Um, and I have done everything, leaving messages that were never returned and so forth. And, uh, I even went to the first realtor who was trying to sell the house because I didn't want to see a grandfathered in. And then that sign's gone. Nothing's being done. All of a sudden Century 21 pops in there. And, um, I called them. They didn't return my call. I came down here and I was lucky enough to bump into George, or not your luck, but. And, uh, at least I had somebody who, who looked into it and gave me some advice. And returned my phone calls. And after receiving this information that I have, and I'm sure you are all privy to, I think it's a simple mistake. It was done without malice. That the, the zoning officer inadvertently wrote five with two hash marks instead of one. So now it's built. And they're trying to sell the house. And if somebody comes in that house and we're still dealing with this, that's not going to be too good for me or them. So I was trying to get it resolved before the sale of that property. The people who lived there, after they extended it, they, they went to Texas.
I, I talked, my, my, the county manager brought this to my attention. Um, we're still working to see how we can resolve the problem. I don't know if George has any updates. But, uh, we are talking to our solicitor about it. And we can, uh, resolve this, the problem we can work to do with it.
I believe the best course of action this, at this point is to ask Mike Pierce for an official opinion on the matter.
Yeah.
We haven't, I mean, we talked about it and we, we reviewed the documents, uh, but I think we should be able to ask him to get the certain, some official in writing and give that along, Mr. Wilson.
Dan, we do convey that to Mike that we need to. So we can move ahead and we should probably get the name of the realtor from now. Um, because that way we can put them on notice because it may not be being disclosed to the potential buyers.
Mm-huh.
Which is what often happens when a state is transferred, something gets forgotten. And we can't let this. Or, or.
Thank you.
Mr. Thorpe. I like to aspire to that. My father worked one block. When you do everything, you have to look up. A lot of this, that's what I used to do from the beginning. Everything I've looked up. Street, well, first of all, the street on the map is a dedicated street. All the way down to the end. It's yellow. It's out of the bowl, out of the paper. Dedicated street. Father, so me and my brother own the property of 2334 since 1979. According to the county, according to your own court, supposed to provide a street. Supposed to provide a street for. A freeway, a parkway, whatever you wanna call it. All the properties that's on the street. And my wife, I made videos. Our street is flooded. Flooded. Thomas Avenue is flooded. Uh, they had stormwater management on that. We don't. Now, the engineer tried to say. Tried to say that the property is causing the flood on the street. Can you pull up the video? Everybody doesn't see this, you have to see this.
We understand, and we're trying.
No, but, but you have. Okay, so let me, let me just formally say this.
Mr. Smith, I've said repeatedly that we're going, that we were, we're trying to find the money to fix the, to solve the problem. We are, we are going to repave the road that you live on now, it's attached to work that is, that was incomplete. So, we are, so we are taking care of that up in, up, up until that end. Beyond that, we don't, we, we don't have a, we don't have any resolution for that yet. In, in the punch list, it was agreed with your engineer and our engineer, there was a couple items that needed to get done. So, I'm hoping that's been done.
Part, part of.
So, we can issue the CO, and then your brother, and request a release for the S group, and that money can be returned.
So, but I wanna, I wanna, I wanna go ahead, everybody in here. Fact. The part of the question is that. We have to clean the park. Clean the street, so, right now, everybody in this room. For county code 505A, extensions. Of subdivision and land development with board commissioner determines that extraordinary barges is difficult to make results on the strip compliance, which you're saying. Budget down there. The regulation and the purpose of this regulation may be served to greater extent and alternate proposal. And board commissioner, what you just said, the caller already sent the email, and said that you guys want to do it. Authorizing waiver for requirements of this chapter so that substantial justice may be done. Such actions shall be assisted with public interest, with the character of the community. I request this, this waiver in writing, and would like a formal response to the punch list that is being put out.
What waiver are you requesting?
Um, I'm requesting for the regulation waiver of the extension that was required on my plan for the street, for the street.
Right, and we're, we're taking care of that.
Right, we're taking care of, right, right, but there's a problem, that's a problem. Saying this, I'm a disabled veteran, collar of veteran, four tours in the middle of the week. I'm requesting your assistance. As you know, the stress of this bill, I am the sign. That I am co-signed with my brother, and so that means I'm laying on. Talk back tonight. And very, very difficult for me. Went off on you guys, apologized, it was very, very, because I keep doing everything you asked me to do. I extended it a lot, but it's a flood, it's terrible, wondering how you're gonna. On a street, on a public street. Now, we, we broke on this, and like you said.
Okay, so, Mr. Smith, when you say extended, what are you, what are you asking for?
Well, but when you, when you did foot street, right?
How far are you asking?
Fifteen feet.
Okay, we've already agreed to that, you want that on?
When, 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 in, in contention for my certificate of occupancy. Can't get my certificate of occupancy. Uh, according to the plan, I extended the street fifteen, uh, I extended one half. Right, of course you want to add, did all that, and it's not good enough.
Correct.
I mean, it's.
Correct. Correct, that is correct, so be. Let me, yeah, let me finish, thank you. Did you have something you wanted to add?
I would like to.
No, no. No, we don't wanna see the video.
We believe, uh, that, that, you believe the storm. No, I never, I never, I never.
Okay.
My certificate of occupancy should not be, should not be held up because of the water coming from that, coming from the street.
Your certificate of occupancy was not held up because of the water, that's a recent event because we had all the flooding, right? The work, the, the work that was done to that area is not up to standard, which is why it was listed as not, not correct. As well as the area on the sidewalk. The water, the flooding, the tree, the overgrowth, let me finish, the overgrowth that's there. Um, we had our highway department go out to make an assessment of that area, and what they've determined is, in order for. In order for it to be developed correctly, right, completed correctly, we're gonna have to tear up the sidewalk. To bring it up to the elevation that's needed, so we're gonna do the sidewalk, and we're gonna do the end of that cart, that, that fifteen feet. And then, once that's done, they're gonna go in and clear out the shrubs, the bushes and all, at the end.
Please let her finish with the word.
Okay, we're gonna finish all that, clear that out at the end so that the water drains properly, and hopefully, your neighbors will stop getting water in their basement also. Okay, all right. So, the CO, I can't answer that, I know that, um. That those items were, uh, were holding it up, right? I also know that, I believe, wasn't there a berm or something that had to be put in, in order? You wanna turn your mic on? Okay, go ahead, Lisa.
So, one of the punches that was generated, was generated with. A student who was mine engineering myself. Us and I determined the sidewalk was, was not at the elevation that showed wrong with my. Or by that. Um, also, the, the driveway was wider, which means that the. The inlets that were put in to, to protect the water, it, it weren't. We were out in the pouring rain, the rain. Cloud cast and went down towards the, the area that, that is flooded. Next lot down and then into that area.
It's on video.
Yeah, just please.
What, uh. What we are, what we determined that the best course of action would be to put a berm along the edge of the driveway, which. Water versus it going across the driveway, go into the inlets and into the stormwater management, so. So, that's what's in the, in the.
Okay, okay.
I have to respond to that, because me and my wife, I, I have video evidence, me and my wife.
What?
Was out there in the rain, in the hurricane, with no physical water going from the property. Because the stormwater, the stormwater inlets were. They were, that is a complete fabrication of the truth. I'm sorry to put you out there like that, but I, but we got evidence. Got evidence. And then we have evidence of a water coming down the street, in the middle of the street. In the middle of the street, and the sidewalk that you're talking about, is not even, is, is, is dry. It's dry, this is contained.
Okay. What is your video show?
And it's going down to there, my name's. Name's Smith, under the twenty three. From the source, and then third generation, when it's just like everybody else. Video shows, water draining, on that rainy day. Now, the bottom of the street, we have a video of Vincent's house. You know, it doesn't, um, you don't see any water coming from his property at all, it's a, it's, it's bad. I've, I've been there, you know, and the poles have been there all our lives. That water, there's no, there's no, um, sewer hole down there, there's no, no, no place for the water to go.
So, your video, basically, what you're, you're showing a comparison of Thomas Avenue and Douglas Avenue? Okay, we can, I'll look at the videos after the meeting, because we do, we do need to move on. Um, but what I will say is that the township is taking the steps to make the corrections to the end of Douglas Avenue. And at that point, um, your brother will get his CO.
The guy from CBL just said something real quick. Hey, guys, um, so, yeah, Brian's Brett Hank is president of Rochester Baseball League, I, no, I'm not standing up. I, um, I just wanted to bring to the board, I was asked to come to the board and present our ideas of, up at CBL. Um, obviously, with COVID, we got hit pretty hard, we're trying to do a rebranding of, uh, CBL a little bit. Um, minor stuff, and then two, I wouldn't call major, but I guess major enough where I have to come in and present to you guys. So, with our money, our, our parents fundraised thousands of dollars, we did a great job, um, with the youth and our parents fundraising, um, close to twenty seven thousand dollars. Part of that money that we fundraised as parents, um, one of the biggest ideas that the parents want is a grass infield. Um, that money, we can use towards at least one grass infield, that's the major field. The major field's the one that's connected to, pretty much right there at the clubhouse, that's our showcase field. Um, our idea is to do this field by field, um, I understand there's, there's grants and stuff, but unfortunately. Um, fundraising money, parents want me to use their money, parents do not want me to sit on their money. So, I wanna be able to use it, um, so one would be a grass infield, the other will be finishing up the concrete on all four dugouts on the top two fields. So, the rookie field and the major field, there's four total dugouts. Partially concreted at this time, the other part of the dugout is filled with rocks. Kids are throwing rocks on the field, it's not safe, I'd like to get the rocks out of the dugout, so we're gonna concrete all that dugout. I'm not asking for the township for any money, I'm just asking for permission to do it. Um, it's, it's stuff that we've done in the past many times as a league, I know that you're trying to. Formalize things as a board, and I can appreciate that, and that's why I'm here, is to, just to ask permission to get that done. Um, and get that grass infield, all, all of which I, I've sent, I believe, estimates, hopefully, Brian, I don't know Nicole, I don't know if you have them, whoever might have them. Um, those estimates are, are to you, can be in front of you guys. Um, everything's insured, the kids are insured, eighty, everything's ADA accessible, nothing changes. I'm putting grass on an infield, and I'm finishing up the concrete and the dugouts. We're doing other minor stuff, but. The biggest way to attract kids back, I, I, when I started, we had four hundred and fifty kids. At Rochester Baseball League, I'm down to about two hundred and eighty, we're losing kids to Ask the Middletown, we're losing kids to all of these nicer facilities that have grass infields. Branch infield is baseball.
As I briefly discussed with you tonight, the, the township, just so we know, we have a master parks and recreation plan. And we'll be looking at all the parks and making, um, recommendations, applying for grants to make improvements to all the parks throughout the township. And so, what the board wanted to consider is, hey, do we, you know, wait on CBL? Um, wait till we get the plan done, to see what recommendations the, the, um, company that we're going with makes for CBL fields, as well as the other parks. And, and apply for grants, grant money to do this, uh, which can take some time. So, we just wanted to put it out there to say, hey, do you wanna wait and let us apply for grants so that this is covered, because, you know, they are township fields. Um, so it is at the pleasure of the board, um, as to whether or not they wanted to move forward with that, or to go ahead and do the grass infields. I don't see a problem with it to doing the, the, um, I am kinda concerned about the, the concrete, that portion of it. And if something comes back and we need to, like, tear that down, like, I don't, I don't know about that, but Lisa, did you?
Can I help you?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, and so, if you think about it, I don't, if you get out there, I'm no joke.
I haven't been there.
We have our dugout, and that's a long concrete.
Right, I saw that.
The dugout in the fourth episode, which is.
Right.
Or rocks, what the kids are doing is making example rocks. The idea was always to have concrete. It doesn't, it's not going to, they're not as, they're not going to, there's nothing, it's something like that. It just, put the concrete, you know, professionally done, on top of these rocks, instead of a whole deck circle. So, when our kids are in the whole deck area, that's all completely fenced in, instead of being on top of rocks, they feel on top of concrete, it's thin without that.
They're basically extending the inside of the dugout.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
I was wondering, I saw some real numbers on there.
I'm fine with that, yeah.
And then the, the other idea to call it, is, I can fully understand what's, what's happening with the parks, with the, with all the grants. I can tell you, I can find you twenty five different million dollar projects, with CBL, we can find, or use that money. This twelve thousand dollars to do a grass infield, and three thousand dollars to do concrete, I have to use one of these. Part of my job is to represent the state, I'm talking, I can't keep carrying cash, that my eleven dollars. Fundraise, now they're twelve, I'm third only, four, six, seven, eight, nine, most. So, if they fundraise twenty seven thousand dollars, it's my job to, to upgrade the sewers. We need lanes, we need open lines. But I just, I would rather not.
Okay, George.
Yeah, that, so the grant application that you're gonna be acting on tonight does include, I believe it was about twenty some thousand for landscaping. So, I guess what I would say is, if they're gonna use the, the fundraising funds, then you can pivot that towards other landscaping on the site. So, I think it's either, either way, it works.
Okay.
The CBL, the C. So, so the CBL master parks plan that was adopted previously by the board does indicate that those fields will be converted back to grass fields, so.
Okay.
Did they get, we get any other numbers, I mean, I'm not. Okay, although I think Joe and I were both on the board when they took those. That's helpful, I don't know. But did you get it, is this the only bid you got for twelve thousand?
I, I got numbers from, I was a kid, I got numbers from Betsy, I need to get numbers from Ashley. That company is delivering to Blue Rocks, thanks. Delivering to Blue Rocks, and I, I counted on them to be able to do the best job. Um, obviously, Danny Kelly might be able to come in cheaper, uh, some other guys, but I just wanna make it professionally done the best weekend. So, landscaping, I went, got something there. Thanks. I'm not gonna fuck with it. Um, so with that said, I'm gonna move on to, uh, regular meeting, have approval of the minutes from August twelfth, twenty twenty one, board commissioner.
So, move. He's good, right, they can do the work.
It's on the agenda.
It's on our agenda to, to call.
We're still gonna try to move forward for the grants, boy.
We're gonna cover America.
Second it.
Motion in a second, all favor.
Hi.
Who, 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 who? George, George is gonna look into a small change on page ten, because I think it's referenced all personal.
Which, what, what area, say that again?
On page ten. Line one, if you really wanna look at it, so the gentleman was coming in to talk about the poles in front of his house.
Oh, okay.
He says, Richard refused to let me pull the poles, I think, Charlie refused to let me put the poles in, which should say. He's gonna, he's gonna listen to that, and.
Okay. Yeah. Oh, page ten, line twenty.
Motion in a second. Yeah, we passed it. Uh, before we go on, just like to make a public announcement, uh, that we met. Before we go on, I just like to make a public announcement that we met at executive session tonight. And next, we're going to discuss litigation and personnel matters. Item number nine on our agenda. Have a member of the board consider a resolution approving the escrow release for Posada Brothers Company products in the amount of $4,123.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried.
That is resolution 2021-40.
Item number ten. Have a member of the board consider a resolution approving the escrow release for Posada Brothers Company products in the amount of $337.86.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried.
That is resolution 2021-41.
Item number eleven. Have a member of the board consider a resolution approving the escrow release for Caltech Wireless, formerly Empire Telecom, in the amount of $1,336.93.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried.
That is resolution 2021-42.
Item number twelve. Have a member of the board consider a motion accepting the proposal from the minor senator of Lafayette College for recruitment services related to the Director of License and Inspection Department.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried. All right, item number thirteen. We'll have our vice chairman, Mr. Delaco, read it.
Announcement of the shredding event to take place in the parking lot of Fury Road Field House on October 2, 2021. Second?
Yeah, no, it's announcement.
Okay, the time, I think, is nine to twelve.
Yes.
Nine to twelve.
Fourteen sixteen.
Consider a motion authorizing payment request number three from Premier Concrete Incorporated for the Chichester Avenue Streetscape project in the amount of $70,281.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried.
Consider a motion ratifying the vote taken during the executive session on September 2, 2021 to enter into an employment agreement with James Putman with the position of Director of Public Works, subject to his acceptance and the review of the solicitor.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried. For items over sixteen, three eighteen, we'll have Commissioner Edward Gelson read it.
Thank you. This is an announcement for 9/11, the 20th anniversary memorial procession. And commemoration event at Casperius Park in Lynwood, Pennsylvania. Procession starts at 11:00 a.m. here in Upper Chichester, we proceed down to the Casperius Park. And commemoration will begin at 12 o'clock to 1 o'clock. The second one is, I move to ratify the vote taken during the executive session on September 2, 2021, to appoint Ray Fuller, Director of Police and Emergency Services, as the deputy interim fire marshal for Upper Chichester.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried.
The next one, I move to authorize the township solicitor to advertise a public hearing for October 14 at 6:30 p.m. when the proposed transfer of Pennsylvania restaurant liquor license, number R-46212, from Proposed Pizza LLC, formerly located at 1145 West Baltimore Pike, number 3046, Media PA 19063-5156, to Wawa Inc., to a restaurant facility to be located at 26, oh wait, Restaurant Chichester Avenue, Boothland PA 19061, with the understanding that said transfer must be approved at a later date by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried. Items number nineteen, two, we'll have Commissioner...
All right, good evening, everyone. A couple announcements. Upper Chichester Township Community Day Celebration with fireworks will take place on Saturday, October 9, 2021. We are planning to begin the day in the afternoon, I believe around 2 o'clock. More information will be coming out about that. It'll be up here. There will be barbecue contests, I believe it's chicken and barbecue ribs contest. So they'll be looking for individuals to sign up for that, who has the best barbecue. Again, that's Saturday, October 9. That's also the day of the high school homecoming event. So we're going to collaborate with the high school. The game will be that afternoon. And we're hoping that individuals that are family members, once the game is over, they'll also come down to Fury Road to participate and hang out that afternoon and stay around for the evening of fireworks. Consider a resolution accepting the Lynwood Heights Neighborhood Revitalization Plan and furthermore resolving to allocate resources to complete the objectives of the plan over the next 15 years.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried.
That's resolution 2021-43.
Consider a resolution authorizing the application to Delaware County for funding from the Delco Greenways Grant Program Round Two.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That is resolution 2021-44.
Consider a motion accepting the Fury Road Field House fee waiver request for Representative Craig Williams to hold a Veterans Expo on Friday, September 17.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it, motion is carried. For item, for the balance of our items to be moved on, we'll have Commissioner Joe read it.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everybody. There is a scheduled finance committee meeting on Monday, September 27 at 6:00 p.m. Just looking at the budget and also at the financials here today. Consider a motion ratifying the vote taken during the executive session on September 2, 2021, to make a conditional offer of employment to Jacqueline Gunther for the position of Finance Director, subject to her acceptance of the offer and successful completion of all necessary pre-employment screenings. Move.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Next motion is, consider a motion ratifying the vote taken during the executive session on September 2, 2021, to transfer Gabrielle O'Connor to the Position of Special Projects Coordinator in the Executive Administration Department. So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
No.
Consider a motion ratifying the vote taken during the executive session on September 2, 2021, to accept the resignation of Deborah Brooks.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Consider a resolution updating the 2021 wage resolution to reflect and further ratify votes taken in the executive session on September 2, or September 2, 2021. So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's have a question to ask. What? Reflect and further ratify votes taken in the executive session. Just want to explain a little bit. We can already do that, can't we? Can we already do that?
What's your question, Joe?
What are we ratifying here?
We're ratifying the wage resolution that we passed at the beginning of the year. At the beginning of 2021. We are changing it. While we're doing a resolution to reflect the changes that we made to the resolution.
We're not changing the resolutions, right?
Correct, correct. Okay. Right.
I want to, knowing that, I mean, I know we weren't quite done, and Joe had his question, but mine's no.
You voting no on that last one?
Because you are changing. It says it's taken in executive session back in September 2. So the highlighted ones that were talked about in the back are being changed.
The ones that we agreed, that we essentially agreed to last week.
Right.
And this confirmed it tonight.
Right, and that's, right, and I'm voting no for it. Right.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, motion is carried.
That is resolution 2021-45.
Consider a motion accepting the 2022 minimum municipal obligation for the police pension fund in the amount of $1,227,753.
Second.
Motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried.
Consider a motion accepting the 2022 minimum municipal obligation for the non-uniform defined benefit pension fund in the amount of $120,496. So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried.
Consider a motion accepting the 2022 minimum municipal obligation for the non-uniform defined contribution pension fund in the amount of $53,396.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried.
Consider a motion approving the list of bills in the amount of $622,323.32.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried. All right, that's it. We'll move on to our press report. Mr. Delo, please, our solicitor.
All right, I'm Dave, I'm live, filling in for Mike. Just to have everyone there. In fact, you have like support, just to highlight some of the items. Mike has prepared an appearance upon the answer. Oh, and in fact, this... Appeals involving the township. Most current matter is for a property owned by Upper Chichester, leased for billboard. There will be a conference on that in early October. I don't have the exact date yet. Proposed revisions to the SRO contracts submitted to the school district. Mike, understanding that the school district proved it, but he hasn't received anything from the school district solicitor yet to make sure that that's happened. Mike's been working with manager, actuary, bond counsel, pension consultants, move forward, bond issuance is outlined in the presentation earlier. Mike's also been reviewing research, various issues related to personnel matters in the township. Reviewed, received a request for beginning collective bargaining agreement with the paternal order of place related to contract negotiations. I understand that's still preliminary stages. I guess George would have more information on that. Also, he appeared on behalf of the township at several magisterial district judge hearings related to property maintenance, earth disturbance, water runoff. Also, a default letter went to Costa Homes. And he has a recommendation plan approval for the proposed development Maple Zone related to construction hotel with conditions. Two stormwater management agreements with recorded deeds have been filed on behalf of the township. Mentioned in your resolution tonight about the hearing for Wawa, so he'll be working on that. And he reviewed and approved proposed waivers and consensual utilization of workout facility for firefighters. And the other matters were routine in nature.
Any questions from our solicitor tonight? Just one, Dan, could you ask Mike to get me a copy of the receipt of the letter from the registered letter for Costa?
Yes.
Okay, because he was going to send it to me, and I'd like to forward that so we have know when the timeline begins.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Dan, can you ask Mike to get a... I requested last week, and I haven't seen it yet. I don't know if George has it, the letter from the fire department? For the...
Yeah.
That waiver for the...
Last week in the work session, Mike mentioned that. I'll make sure he gets it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Another question for our solicitor.
Mr. President, if you do have a copy of my written report, Wawa's been before. It has been paid. And I never said that. I don't expect him to... I had something. I talked to Robert Rico, and I did report this. The 13 seconds that we talked about with the left turn, that is a standard. However, if you notice, if the car moves cars in that lane, it will automatically start moving. It's a safe...
That is a concern. I mentioned that last week or whatever. When you go southbound, and you're sitting there, and northbound gets to... Say I'm sitting there, and the guy pulls up to the left lane going south. Me and South going towards Lower Chi. Northbound gets to Green Lake to make their left. Well, somebody's pulling up and going south. The yellow light comes on automatic flashing. Northbound, that don't seem too safe to me, because I'm thinking, I'm not realizing, northbound still actually has the green arrow and going straight and turning. Dude, that sounds kind of...
I mean, I don't... Probably, but now that we talked about, they will have a final meeting. Will be invited to that meeting, so...
Because I've sat there, and it's like, whoa, I mean, they're coming at you.
Sometimes it's green yellow arrows.
Right.
Yeah.
And the green, so, I mean, don't get me wrong, everybody's happy with the turning lanes, but...
It is slow.
Yes, it is, but...
He went after the check. Other thing, that second light...
Oh, right.
Is actually because the stop cars is so...
They're far back. Okay, thank you.
Just a couple other things. We did get the easements back from the solicitor's office. Our patient, um, and... We're going to go and discuss them. We'll find out what we talked about. The lead report, trying getting the patients together. That was supposed to be on the... Probably getting other support out there, but...
I have a question.
Are we closer at Somerset?
We received plans... Post day last year. I think we are. And Jeff Foods, like... Offense, like some of these properties where the...
The Delco Greenways, is that for CBL? Okay, and then 2331, under... Okay, and then twenty-three thirty-one under Municipal Public Works, twenty-three thirty-one fall cross. The remediation point, action plan. Do I have a copy of that, George?
Twenty-three thirty-one curb cross where the sinkhole in the backyard. Went out, he cut a, a remedy with that particular area. What we think is happening is that there is, where the sinkhole is in the backyard next to the shed, that is a joint that's failed. So what to do around it, you can put a fitting on it, close it up because the water appears to be going down through the. I don't know whether that's done or not. But it is on one of his, one of his lists to do. We talked about it in public works.
It's on West.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, if you can get me an update to where we are with that project, I'd appreciate it.
Just one more. George, or I don't know if George had the answer or you did, Lisa. Coming home from work at night, every night, I work night work, but that, that island over there at the crosswalk, and I question, are we allowed or expedite to put a flashing light on the yellow part? Just to, because it is kind, I know we got a light there, but it is still dark in that area for that island, for the crosswalk. And if it's solar panel or if we're allowed to put something up just to, a yellow light on the yellow sign, just to flash it.
The other thing I was thinking is on the pole itself.
Right. Yeah, they do that for the stop sign. So, I mean, we could try that. I mean, I come home every night. That'd work. I mean, if we have it. You, you see it, but you don't see it until you hit almost, uh, produce in McCade Avenue, so. Okay.
George, we had some residents that hit that and were dealing with the insurance company as they make out.
We haven't had anybody come back and complain that they had any issues doing. Got the insurance certificate for the project. Good evening. The administrative reports are on file in the administrative offices. Uh, most of the items that were hit, spoke about were hit on tonight. Uh, the bond will be closing everything up on the seventeenth, and that's when the deposit will come into the O P E D trust funds. So I believe that we're going to have to redo the MMOs next month. Uh, if we don't do them next month, it'll be in November, but we'll have some action items around, uh, Act two oh five, which is the act that, uh, gives us the authority to issue taxable bonds to fund pension liability. So there'll be a couple of action items required to do that. Uh, you had reached out about the, uh, the easements for, uh, in reference to, uh, the vacation of Rankin Avenue, the deeds and stuff. I've gotten some of that information together. I don't have everything together now, but I should be able to have something to you next week.
That's fine.
With, uh, a, a course of action forward to, to anything needs to be justified or fixed.
Yeah, there should be one more on Hillside that, where the garage was when we found the last big storm. Uh, I don't think I gave, it's next to the nine oh three, I think it is. That's where it all starts, going over to eight twenty-four meeting house.
Okay, nine oh three, next, next to nine.
That would be just an easement for the stormwater, yeah. Next to nine oh three. I'll get you that address.
Thank you.
No other questions for Captain, is that your?
My reports are on file. Um, anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to ask them. Just kudos to the highway guys again for all these storms, up and everything.
Thank you. Um, just a couple of things I would like to reiterate, um, that were, that were shared earlier. Tomorrow is the library's twentieth anniversary celebration here at the township. It'll start at five o'clock. There'll be food trucks, Delco Cruisers, and again, the, um, book sale is going on. You can fill up a bag of books for twenty dollars. So please come out and support the library. On Saturday, uh, September eleventh will be the twentieth anniversary to commemorate, um, the, um, tragic, tragic events that took place on, um, September eleventh, two thousand and one. The parade will, or should I say, not the parade, the, um, walk will start, um, in Upper Chi Chester and go down and end at Gaspari Park, where the event will, uh, start approximately twelve noon. And, um, so if you're able to attend that, it should last for, you know, from eleven to one, a couple hours. So if you're able to attend that, please do. And, um, Community Day, that's going to be Saturday, October the ninth. Again, that, uh, this, it'll start that morning with a parade, um, with the high school. That is the high school's homecoming event that day as well. So we're trying to partner, um, with them to have a full day, a parade, football game, and then, um, food and events. There are cards, um, de- out in the, out in the lobby. So there'll be food rides, moon bounces for the small kids, a cornhole tournament, uh, barbecue contest, wing eating contest, live music, entertainment. We'll have local vendors. So if you know of any businesses, um, that would like to, um, participate, please have them reach out to our Recreation Director, Brian Warren, here at the township. All events, entry, entry into Community Day is free, um, free of charge to all residents. Obviously, if you want to purchase something from vendors, that will, it'll be at their, um, their cost. So dusk, at dusk, we will have fireworks. Yeah, so that's Community Day. And, um, heart and soul, wanted to let the board know that, um, heart and soul, the leadership team will be here on Monday, September the twentieth at five o'clock to begin phase four of the training. And that will be to compile, summarize the survey, community input. They'll start the data analysis and the final draft plan, um, and the, start the project to interchange and clean up. So Jen, Jen and Leanne will be here at four thirty. They would like to meet with any commissioners that are available on that day to just, you know, get a quick chat. Because again, it's thirty minutes. The training starts at five. So if any commissioner is available, um, please let, let me know and or let Barb know or, yeah, let me or Barb know if you're available to meet with, um, the leadership. It's going to be Monday, September twentieth, so not this coming Monday, but next, the following Monday. Okay, all right, thank you. And, um,
If that event is informational, you can have a quorum there.
Right, it's only informational, so if everybody can, anybody that's available can attend. Now, other than that, all reports are on file and, um, that's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, all reports are on file to, um, fire marshal, uh, the medics, emergency management. As Nicole was saying with her heart and soul, uh, we're winding down on the Boothland Town Center. Reports are in your packets. We're gathering, we gathered all the information that we had with all of our surveys and we just mailed out over six thousand, uh, mail-ins with the fire department for more surveys for the Boothland Town Center. Hopefully, we get them back and get everything back together for October and wind it down by the first of next year, twenty twenty-two. Emergency management, uh, as Mr. Biaco, Commissioner Biaco was saying, with the Highway Department was a very, it was a very active August, uh, with Tropical Storm Fred, Tropical Storm, uh, Andre, and just recently your Hurricane Ida. Uh, we've been very fortunate in this area with everything. We were very fortunate last night. We didn't get the storms in this area that they got uh, out towards Rudden and everything last night that they predicted. But, uh, it's one of the reasons FEMA has, has dedicated September to be, uh, be prepared for a tornado. And, uh, we posted stuff on social media, media, uh, for that. And every week, the emergency management will have something different that FEMA puts out in the month of September. I thank Andrew for putting that up every, uh, every week. I'm not sure if, uh, Mr. Robinson got to this week's out with it, but something you want to be prepared. We've seen it. We've seen it in Philadelphia. They, just recently with Hurricane Ida. We were very fortunate, um, and I sent something out even to the, George, tonight or today regarding, um, your American Rescue Plan about the seminar for the stormwater for next Tuesday. Anybody wants to participate, it's wide open. I think we, we have a lot of issues. Yeah, yeah, it's virtual. We could send it to.
I don't know if I'll be up and about yet. Yeah, that's what I want to do.
When, when's your Tuesday? Get up. But other than that, that's all I have. So, but it's been a very active, and but we've been very fortunate in Upper Chi, so. So I have.
How about Joe Neary? He had, he had some hair. Wasn't me saying.
I, I'm gonna leave my mask up.
The, um, financial report. Financial reports, we're all getting giddy, I'm sorry. The financial reports and the police reports are available at, in the office. There were no trash refunds this month. Use the pace and we continue to do well financially. I look forward to the budget presentation on the twenty-seventh. I have, thank you.
I just got a couple of comments. Um, just one would be for Dan, for Mike to go back. But yeah, I'm disappointed on the one with the space boy. I mean, it's, but Dan, I have a question. I'm not, I don't know if, are we, oh, I don't think we're allowed to, honestly. I'm not trying to put Mike in a spot here, but we're not allowed at a public meeting to comment on a zoning before the zoning hearing, are we? I mean, I, don't get me wrong. I mean, that's more influential of, yeah, a- and I understand that there is presidents of, in that same development. But we have a situation in Yorktown where we're five inches instead of five feet, but isn't that? I mean, because if they hear this here before the zoning, and it's, I just don't want us to be in a position, right?
I don't have anything else.
Second.